What I'm about to do is, I'm about to get started. Islam, 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 we are here, we are here, we are here. For thirty minutes more or less, probably less because I got stuff to do today. Of course, you know, the life of a busy mom is just that, busy. Uh, give me just a second. Alright, and I'm, alright. Yes, you heard me whistling Silverbells because that song, it's not because it's Christmas. That song's been stuck in my head since the seventh grade. Yeah, it's pretty awful. Um, so Islam, welcome to the second Saturday study session. And if I seem a little rushed, it's because I'm feeling rushed right now. Alright, I'm not gonna keep y'all too long. Um, just wanted to come in today and actually give y'all some, put some meat on the bones, right? Last week, we covered what this is. It's a part of the forty days of gifting back because it's part of more mercy charities, Khalifa Media, May by Sarouj, Morris Science Temple, Soul Temple twenty-seven, Sisters Auxiliary, National Men's Business League, and uh, individual volunteers, right? And contributors. So forty days from November twenty-seventh through uh, the Prophet's birthday on the eighth is forty days. And last year, we were um, collecting money. This year, we're giving back because the Moores have been so generous. We don't need to collect, alright? And if I'm looking in two different directions, I'm on Instagram and recording for later, right? Because this is gonna need graphics, just like the last one. The last one has graphics up on YouTube if you're interested. That's Khalifa Media's YouTube. And a little bit more um, housekeeping before I begin. Again, it's the forty days of gifting back to the Prophet's birthday, which is supposed to be the Moorish Christmas where we visit, we travel, you know, um, and we give gifts and we have stuff, Moores have stuff. So you can give gifts to those who don't know, those who do know, or get yourself something, right? And right now is fifteen percent off everything in the store. And I think it's set to where if you order over fifty dollars worth of stuff, it's free shipping. And most of the books, if you order the physical copy, you get the digital copy for free. Alright, and everything's fifteen percent off already. Uh, real quick, show you a few things we got. Um, no, I'm not because I really don't have time. All that stuff is on KhalifaMedia.com/storefront. And please excuse me if I sound congested, alright? My fault. Um, so, today we're covering step one of filing a court case. Because I remember a while back, some people who didn't know what they were doing said their, their instruction for step one was to file the uh, the cover letter for the suit itself. I'm like, yeah, that's fine, you can do that. You can use that cover letter to start a suit. And um, it's a cover letter for something which you're gonna put it on. That's the part they were missing, right? An actual suit, that kind of thing. So uh, talk about, it's like nah, you're not even putting the cart before the horse. You haven't, the horse ain't born and the cart ain't built, that's what y'all doing, alright? Um, those individuals. So I'mma show folks what to do based on um, my good European education because I actually did go to paralegal school and my actual experience in application, right? Gifting it to y'all. Because I've helped so many people who wasted my time. I'm just going to give the information and you can take it and save yourself. I love it. Now I get it, I get it. It's like, nope, here's the whole thing, right? I would make a template, but you know, people get a hold of templates. I'm using the RB Bay as an example. They get a hold of templates, don't read them, don't study them, try to use them, and then get mad at the person they got the template from because they did it. They did something wrong. There's nothing wrong with the template, there's something wrong with you, alright? So um, yeah, and that light, it's like, nope, here you go, save yourself. So step one, excuse me, you need a statement of fact, alright? Um, because I love this, or I don't love, the maxim in law, no maxims, maxims, um, where it's so known, it doesn't have to be codified. And it's universal in all jurisdictions on planet Earth, probably in space. So this maxim is, where there is no complaint, there is no controversy. So if you don't say nothing, nothing will happen, right? Well, if you say nothing, do nothing, that's what you get, nothing, right? Islam to all who have joined, all those who will join later, you know, gratitude. Alright, so I have my notes because why, I respect your time. Alright, so um, like I said, too many jump straight to filing suit without a suit, right? I'mma sue you, okay? You just gonna go down to the courthouse with some money or whatever, you don't have to file. That's fine, they'll let you do that. And then the judge will let you get up in front of everybody and be like, where's your complaint? And embarrass you, you know? So, you need a suit. Um, once the case is initiated, that's not the time to prepare. Like, yeah, I'mma file the, I'mma file a complaint or a civil suit because they'll let you do that, like just the um, the cover letter. And then I'll follow up with the complaint. You can try that if you want, but it's gonna make you look incompetent. Um, and then you're gonna have to dis, if you are competent, you're gonna have to go up in there and dis, and prove that you're not incompetent. So you might wanna start out on the right foot in the first place, right? And that's with your statement of facts, alright? Um, and I'm gonna define it. I'm not just gonna like, give you what I think it means or the generalization. I'm going to actually reach into my fourth edition of the Black's Law Dictionary, right? Uh, and we're gonna look up three, I found three. I did not find statement of facts, but I did find three um, definitions that alluded to it. And it's kind of funny because I'm glad he did that because people could easily assume a statement of fact is any three of these and it's only one of these three, alright? So, what some people might assume is a statement of fact is actually a statement of claim, right? Statement of claim, a written or printed statement by the plaintiff in an action in English High Court showing the facts on which he relies to support his claims against the defendant and the relief which he claims. That's the part that's not in this statement of facts. You're not asking for relief, that comes later in the complaint, okay? So this is not a statement of claim, alright? Because we're kinda, we're trying to show like, yeah, we did our due diligence. We know the difference between a statement of fact and a statement of claim, don't. Because they'll try it, they'll try to say it's a claim. And if you go, uh, well, but you just roll with it, now it's a claim. The devil is indeed in the detail, right? So we angels got our work cut out for us. Anyway, so uh, statement of claim, that's not what this is. The other one, and you see, uh, I always gotta have your markers, right? It's for efficiency if nothing else. Um, statement of the case, which is not a statement of fact, okay? The state of the case, definition, a narrative of the facts upon which the plaintiff relies. Sounds just like statement of claim. Substituted for a more formal declaration in suits in the inferior courts. Alright, so this statement of fact could be, I guess in, if I'm dealing with state court, state jurisdiction, I would say the state of, the statement of the case or state of the case, right? Because that's in inferior jurisdiction. I don't deal with states because it's too sloppy, right? It's too arbitrary. And I'm from, I'm from Chicago, I'm from Cook County. I grew up in Cook County, so I know how bad it can be, alright? Even though it wasn't as bad, you know, it's like algebra. You hear how bad it is and then you get there, it's like, yeah, it was bad, but it wasn't, it wasn't that bad. I could do this, right? But I don't deal with state. And then um, I found that the federal courts can't stand the state courts. Because they make all, they make like the most dumb work for them, right? Like, you knew this was in the Constitution, but now I gotta deal with it. Alright, so I'm like, yeah, I'm just gonna skip right over you. Uh, because really, I don't think the Moor is supposed to be, let me not even get into opinion. Because I don't, I don't appreciate when people do that. So what are we doing? State of facts, alright? It says state of facts, but you can say statement of facts as well, right? Excuse me, so a state of claim, you're asking for relief. That's not what this is, that comes later in this form of complaint, right? State of the case, that's not what that is, this is because according to the definition, which you would want to take this to court with you because they have to apply by to, uh, like, no, this is for, that's for an inferior court and I'm trying to be in a superior court, the highest court, highest, dealing with the law of the land, right? Um, so the state of facts. Formerly, when a master in chancery was directed by the court of chancery to make an inquiry of investigation into any matter arising out of a suit and which could not conveniently be brought before the court of itself, each party in the suit carried in before the, the master a statement showing how the party bringing it, bringing it in, how the party, the complainant um, represented the matter in question to be. And this statement was technically termed a state of fact, quote unquote, and formed the ground upon which the evidence was received. The evidence being in fact brought by one party or the other to prove his own or disprove his opponent's state of fact. So, and so now, a state of facts means the statement made by one of his version of the fact. That's the important um, word in there, evidence, alright? So the state of fact, I'm laying out my, my um, my story, my complaint, right? Because I guess the, the, yeah, I'm laying, laying out the complaint. I'm, I'm, it's like, I hate to use it, I really do not like using this analogy. The complaint is like a Christmas tree, right? And then um, based on how big it is and all that stuff, that determines the evidence or the ornaments I can hang on it. Get it? Alright, I hope that makes sense. So that's what we're dealing with, the state of facts where you're telling your story uh, with no emotion, that comes later in the suit, right? For your, there's actually a section, uh, uh, release, relief sought, right? Or demand for relief, I put in demands, I don't ask for move, I, I put in demands, alright? Um, so that comes in for your demand for relief for like uh, emotional distress, get it? So no, no, I'm just laying out the facts, not my thoughts or whatever, how I felt about it, just the facts, right? Um, and it's a statement of facts because that's um, this statement is where you go, it helps you determine, um, well, what evidence do I have to prove all these claims, right? And then you could also use it as your outline, do I even, can I even sue for this? Is this even a cause of action? Why am I suing you? That's the cause of action, right? Um, I guess in criminal court, it's, it's the charges. I don't do criminal, alright? I really don't because I'm not trying to deal with keeping people out of cages, whatever. I, I'd rather just go out the money because if you lose, you just gotta pay somebody. You don't, nobody gets put in a cage, right? Um, so anyway, so just the facts, no emotions, no citations. The emotions are saved for the conclusion and the demand for relief, i.e. emotional distress. So why start with the statement, alright? But first of all, like I said, it's the outline that you're gonna base your whole case upon. So you might wanna write out what happened. Isn't that what the cops do, they make you take, they take a statement, right? Alright, um, and uh, my suggestion is to take it as soon after the event happened as possible. Like, okay, that just happened, I need a pen, I need a phone so I can record this. Somebody turn, start recording with a camera or something. If you have witnesses around, record them, get everything, get their information, all that stuff. Um, because you know, as time passes, people's memories fade, people move, you know, all that stuff. Um, but I can show you how, if you have a recording of somebody, right? And you also have like a um, you can verify their identity somehow. They don't have to show up for court, you could just submit that as the evidence, right? You put it in your paper and that's it. Um, let's see. And again, when you're collecting your statement of facts, be sure, if you can, be gathering your evidence too. And that could include, like I said, um, audio, video, names, witness statements, preferably written, and police reports, which you have a right to, alright? Um, and I'mma get into that, you want the police report if that's available. Because it's amazing how uh, how blinding is arrogance, right? And I'll get into that. So how to record your statement of facts? You can type it, you can write it, right? You can record it, here's the easy, in the twenty-first century, here's the easiest way to do it. Get a voice recorder, some, some way you can record your voice. Find an app that generates captions, there you go, right? You do it just like that, it's too easy, no excuses. Alright, um, and if possible, after you go through it, you know, make sure there's no typos and all that stuff, get that mug verified, right? Verified as in take it to a notary as soon as it hap, as possible after it happened. So you got a timestamp type of thing, uh, with a state's witness, which um, a notary is, right? And um, your statement of fact, now you don't have a statement of facts, you have a verified statement of facts. And now you just raised the bar for anybody that's gonna try to contest anything you say. Because they gotta do the same, they have to respond in kind. You have to be willing to go to jail on um, penalty of perjury? Because I'm taking that chance, so now you gotta take that chance too. It, it, it kind of puts them in a bind because they're natural born liars, right? Um, because our people are for real, people bring problems to us, so yeah. It's amazing how they, how many lies folks will tell to get out of the problems they created, alright? Um, sir, I think I lost some notes. And if you hear the children screaming, that's why I'm in my room because I have a full house and it didn't mean no good to hide out in my room. So, now that I've shown, gone through and shown how to do this, this is perfect, not even twenty minutes, perfect. Um, I'mma go through the one I actually did, alright? Yes, it's redacted for the sake of, this person doesn't deserve to be uh, protected, but I know them personally and I don't want another splashback and all that stuff. And if you, if you halfway think about it and know me well enough, you can figure out who this is and what this, what happened, where this is coming from. So um, I'm going to read through this person's statement of facts. That um, all I did with this was go through, I helped her write it up, right? And then um, we went in and made it all like, I guess bland. Because again, we're trying to remove all the emotions because it, it, you know, when you gotta sue somebody, that's a charged situation. They put you in a position where you wanna take them to court. It's real easy to get emotional, don't do that, right? Um, you can, you can infer it, but don't, don't, uh, no, don't. So all I did was take her page and then break each sentence into um, a line item. The reason you wanna do that is, if you, here's what happens. Not in a statement of facts, but that can't be messed with, but this is just in like anything else. If you put a sentence, and then a sentence, right? They can only attack one sen, one sentence at a time, right? But if you make like three sentences together, like a paragraph, regular paragraph, and then one of those sentences is something they can challenge, they wanna throw the whole thing out. That's why you separate them, right? Give them problems, like it's called an avalanche of filings, flood of paper, make it complicated. It's real easy for you, just, you like skip, I'mma just put an enter, 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 and then set it to um, highlight the whole thing, select the whole thing and just number it. It's not hard for you, it makes more work for them, right? Um, so I'mma go ahead and read through this, so y'all can see what it sounds like. You gonna hear me say redacted a lot, alright? So, I called it factual allegations because um, this particular court, yes, the federal courts have all of the rules that they all gotta follow, but then when you get to each courthouse, they have their local rules that you gotta look up, right? Be respectful, don't, don't give them any excuses, so just, you know, just look it up. So instead of statement of facts, they wanted factual allegations, okay? So, here we go, story time, right? And for the record, this person brought all this stuff on themselves, but the police in their sloppiness made it where she could sue them anyway, alright? So plaintiff redacted, arrest, interrogation, and unlawful detention. Um, and it's, it's numbered, it's number fourteen, so I guess this was item fourteen in the whole case. Um, number fourteen, plaintiff redacted was indicted for conspiracy to commit custodial interference in the state of redacted, redacted county, and a fugitive felony warrant for her arrest was subsequently issued. The warrant issued by the state of redacted as for the apprehension of the plaintiff, uh, was for the apprehension of the plaintiff so that she might face charges levied against her in that state. The warrant made no mention of a search or seizure of the plaintiff's property. Next item, as the plaintiff was then a resident in the village of redacted, and again, this is all Cook, in Illinois, okay, in the village of redacted, law enforcement in redacted sought the assistance of redacted police department, okay? Defendant redacted, I would say his name, but then you could just look him up and see the whole case. So defendant redacted was who I got bust down to, well, they, they busted him down to a meter maid? While this is all, well, he was like a detective, they busted him down to a meter maid because of all this stuff, alright? So yeah, they didn't win, but he lost big, alright? He had to work, work his way all the way back up. Anyway, um, detective redacted was assigned by the redacted police department the duty of investigating the whereabouts of the plaintiff in an attempt to execute the redacted warrant so she might be extradited back to the state of redacted to face charges. Uh, eighteen, defendant redacted was a newly appointed detective, newly appointed, I forgot about that, newly appointed detective under, under the direct supervision of defendant redacted, of the redacted police, um, police, whatever, police department. On Thursday, July redacted, at about three PM, plaintiff received a call from a police informant asking her, wow, I forgot all about this stuff. Plaintiff received a call from a police informant asking her to meet him at redacted in Chicago, Illinois. When she arrived at the location, she exited her village, her vehicle and approached the building. Thereupon, defendant redacted arrested the plaintiff pursuant to the redacted warrant. Defendant redacted and um, accompanying detective crossed several jurisdictions to apprehend plaintiff rather than contacting Chicago Police Department that they might, that they might execute the outstanding warrant within Chicago's jurisdiction. See exhibit blah, 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 blah. See how you hanging, it's a tree and now I'm hanging my exhibits. You can go look at the exhibits in the box over there, right? Plaintiff was handcuffed and placed in the rear of a redacted police vehicle. Plaintiff was not read her Miranda rights. Remember, each one of these is an item, so they can't just say, strike the whole paragraph. No, you can only strike that one sentence, right? Get them. Plaintiff was handcuffed and placed in the rear of a redacted police vehicle. Plaintiff was not read her Miranda rights. Defendant did not question plaintiff as to whether she had custody or guardianship of a minor child. Play, or defendant did not show plaintiff a copy of the warrant upon her request. See exhibit A, okay? Great story, it's messed up, but like I said, the person brought it all on themselves, but you know how it's like, there's an Arabic saying, it's a pretty messed up saying, I had you for lunch before you had me for dinner? Like, yeah, you got me, but I got you too. And I got you first, actually, right? So, after placing plaintiff in the rear of redacted police vehicle, defendant redacted took the keys to the plaintiff's vehicle, unlocked and opened the driver's side door, and proceeded to search the vehicle without permission and without a warrant. How do we know all this? This fool put it in the police report, he put all of this in the police report. I kinda didn't even have to have her do it, she just had to fill in details that he left out, but he put it all in the police report. Anyway, um, so, I think I left some stuff out of this because it turned out we could, we, we were able to add some more causes of action because some other stuff, he had the, the hubris to put into uh, the police report. Anyway, so after securing certain articles from the vehicle, instead of taking the plaintiff immediately before a magistrate and/or secure, surrendering her to the custody of the Cook County Sheriff, plaintiff was transported over twenty-five miles back to the redacted police department. So he left his city, crossed seven jurisdictions to Chicago, didn't tell the Chicago Police Department, and I let, don't trust me, I let them know about that. They were, they were not happy. Because what if somebody got shot? Something happened, they didn't even know what was, that he was in the city doing this stuff, right? Um, anyway, so, at the blank, at the redacted police department, plaintiff was detained in a small holding cell. Upon detention at the redacted police department, plaintiff immediately requested a phone call and asked to speak with her attorney. Defendant redacted refused her request. This defendant is the same guy, it's just one guy, you know? Uh, when plaintiff asked other officers on duty for a play, a phone call to check on her minor child and the ability to speak with counsel, she was informed this defendant redacted had left instructions that the plaintiff was not to make any phone calls or speak with counsel. He put this in the report. Defendant uh, redacted did not speak to the plaintiff again until Saturday, that following Saturday, remember this happened on the Thursday? He didn't talk to her again till Saturday. On or about that Friday, plaintiff's daughter contacted the redacted chief of police, defendant redacted, oh yeah, he had to get some, like, oh, everybody, you ever heard of um, respondiat superior? I love that, that word, respondiat, respondiat superior. Curb your dog or I'mma sue you too, that's what it means, right? So, chief, you gonna love this, informing, so the, 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 plaintiff's daughter contacted the chief of police, defendant redacted, informing him of plaintiff's detention and the violations of state statutes committed by defendant, the other guy, including acting outside his jurisdiction by executing a warrant in the city of Chicago without notifying the Chicago Police. The defendant chief replied by email saying, good luck with that. So you were notified, you got notice, thank you daughter for doing that. And he actually replied, he could have not replied, I could, they could have used it, couldn't have used it. But he said, oh, thank you for letting me know, good luck, not, oh, we're gonna look into this because that's, that's, that's a grievous violation of at least Chicago. Anyway, so now you get sued too. See how this stuff is fun, alright? So, I'm almost done. On Saturday, July twenty-third first, defendant redacted and defendant redacted conducted an interview with the plaintiff without benefit of requested counsel. Defendant redacted informed her at the time that he would be contacting the FBI who would, who would interview her cell phone contacts to determine the whereabouts of her grandson. It was later determined that detective redacted called these contacts himself. So he broke into her phone and, 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 and went through her numbers and started contacting people who had no idea what this stuff was going on. You know that's against the law, right? Um, including plaintiff's associates residing outside the state of Illinois. Alright, he couldn't justify it, alright? So that's what judge said. Anyway, I'm almost about to wrap this up. Islam to all those joining, I hope you're enjoying the show. Anyway, so, in his police report, defendant redacted states the plaintiff knowingly waived rights to counsel prior to her interview. Plaintiff on more than one occasion over the course of three days asked for, invoked her right to, and was denied access to counsel. Her son took it upon himself to hire a lawyer on her behalf. Plaintiff had no choice but to accept assistance from this unknown attorney as defendant blank, or defendant redacted and the redacted police department consistently acted to prevent her from securing her own counsel. And so shit, they got her word and it's backed up by the police report. I guess they didn't think, you know, they like, well, yeah, check this out guys, look at all this crime we got through, I guess, because you know, niggas don't, they don't know to come get this stuff. Yeah, she didn't say she wanted attorney, she said she wanted her more, and this, this is how it turned out. Um, ba, 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 okay, on, on redacted, plaintiff's grandson was brought to the redacted police department, escorted by the plaintiff's attorney. Plaintiff was transferred to the custody of the Cook County Sheriff's Department on Monday. Excuse me, so she had been there for almost two weeks. Um, see exhibit blah, blah, blah. Plaintiff was denied, was detained in a small holding cell in the park for, wait, wait. She was detained in a small holding cell in the redacted police department for five days before being transferred to the custody of the Cook County Sheriff's Department. During that time, she had no access to bathing facilities, bedding, clean clothing. This was a holding cell for five days. Nor her prescribed medication as she was at that time under the care of a physician. Her glasses were removed from her possession upon arrival at the redacted police station. Uh, defendant redacted attempted to charge plaintiff with aiding and abetting child abduction, but was prevented from doing so by the assistant state's attorney who informed him that the plaintiff was only being held on the outstanding warrant from Arizona. See exhibit blah, blah, blah. So this dude was trying all kinds of stuff and getting shot down. And then he got sued, and then he got demoted. So in his police report, defendant redacted states plaintiff was not processed on the outstanding warrant. He put it in the police report! She was not processed on the warrant until five days after she arrived at the redacted police department. See exhibit A. Exhibit A is the police report. I think it just says exhibit A all through it, it's like, you ain't gotta believe me, believe him, right? Plaintiff was never charged or convicted of committing any crime in the state of Illinois. She was eventually extradited to the state of redacted to face charges for the warrant for which she was arrested in Illinois, okay? And I'm about to wrap this up. Actions and inactions of defendants redacted, 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 and redacted. That was the four, four guys and then the chief, and then the village, yeah. Um, and this is how I learned you have, you can't sue states without their permission because I tried to sue the state too. Um, so, to prolong the plaintiff's unlawful detention, so there are actions to prolong the detention. So on or about redacted, defendant redacted was informed in writing by the plaintiff's daughter of violations and criminally unconstitutional misconduct. Defendant redacted was informed and aware that the defendant, other defendant, had exceeded his authority in more than one fashion and declined to correct his subordinates' behavior. See exhibit B. So you get sued too, you didn't curb your dog. Defendant redacted was aware of the detention of the plaintiff in the police station for which he was responsible no later than twenty-four hours after the plaintiff arrived therein. He was further aware that the plaintiff had been arrested on an out-of-state warrant issued by redacted, thereby negating the need to hold the plaintiff in the park, the police department pending further investigation. Yeah, you're supposed to take them immediately before a magistrate or to the sheriff if it's an out-of-state warrant. Um, at least in a Um, at least in Illinois. The detective, uh, as detective corporal and detective commander respectively. Defendants redacted and redacted had a responsibility to ensure defendant redacted, who was a brand-new detective. Was acting within the bounds of the law and within the limits of his authority. Chief of police, defendant redacted, had a responsibility to ensure all employees of redacted police department were abiding by state statute and federal law and further responsibility to assure the rights of those detained in his station were not being violated. So this lays the groundwork for the, um, evidence, right? The exhibits and the causes of action, which we gonna be using, we gonna be citing cases too, okay? So yes, laying the groundwork for it, right? Um. Let me see this. Do I wanna read the damages? Yeah, I'm gonna read damages real quick, so it's just one paragraph. So plaintiff's damages. I left out one thing this dude did. He actually put up in, uh, I think I put it in, um, amended, I amended it later. The, um, the case, and I put up, because I'm like, he, uh, not only did he violate her fourth amendment rights by going through her car. He also put in a police report. I had to like keep reading this thing and having other people like, am I, am I getting old or, because I was, I was like in my thirties when this happened. I'm just like, do you see this too? He actually put in a police report that he was, uh, peeking, peeking through the windows, peeking through the windows of the house and the garage. You are on, an on-duty police officer. Nobody called you. And you're peeking through windows. That's a violation of the fourth amendment. That's an unlawful search. You put it in a police report. That's how sloppy they are. They're falling, these people are falling apart. Anyway, um, plaintiff was denied right to counsel despite numerous, this is her damages. This is where you can kinda get emotional. Planted, plaintiff was denied right to, um, counsel despite numerous requests during her detention at the par, at the police department. What time is it? Perfect. Um, due to the defendant's denial of this basic, fundamental and guaranteed right. Plaintiff was compelled to accept the services of an attorney unknown to her. Who, as it was later revealed, was not versed in handling extradition cases. Plaintiff's acceptance of this attorney was based solely on the fact that she was prevented by the defendants from contacting her own counsel. Plaintiff further suffered the substantial, sustained loss of friends and family who were unaware of the circumstances surrounding her arrest due to defendant Schweitzer, oops. Oops, I accidentally said his name, whatever. Um, contacting them using plaintiff's cell phone. Defendant redacted took it upon himself to call plaintiff's contacts in her cell phone, not knowing and inconsiderate of the type of relationship between the plaintiffs and the person he was contacting. See how that's kinda messing with emotion, but it's not like, I'm so, I'm enraged. No, it's just like, how would you feel, right? Um, defendant blank, or redacted, redacted and redacted made no efforts to curb their dog, uh, the curb the actions of defendant redacted, curb like a dog, right? You can get slick, you can put pop slick in these things. I've actually caught judges laughing at this stuff, right? Um, for whom they were to act in a supervisory capacity. Uh, supervisory capacity. Defendant was further damaged mentally and physically due to being deprived of her prescribed eyewear, prescribed medication and forced to sleep on a concrete slab in a small holding cell with no bedding. Aside from a plastic seat sheet she was given to cover herself for a period of five days. Do you see why they settled? Plaintiff continues to suffer from anxiety, depression, despair and rage due to injustice inflicted upon her by the redacted police department. The same police charged with upholding the law in the village in which she still resides. Alright, so yeah, that's part one. Um, start with your statement of facts. Write it down as soon as it happens. Call it a memorandum, right? Don't wait, uh, if you can't get people like, did you see that? Yeah, can I just get your contact information and I can get in touch with you later? Cause we need to start suing these folks. It's just like insurance. Start insuring the males in our community and see how fast they stop getting shot. Because they won't be, um, crusty crump showing up just to lead people away and they get a check, but they, these folks, uh, the taxpayers pay and the cops keep shooting because of this guy, right? So, um, no, let the insurance companies hire their lawyers to look into this, because you know, they ain't trying to pay. And enough, enough of this happens and the insurance company will do something to stop all these shootings. In this respect, start suing these fools, right? And, um, this worked, except the person was a black person and got scared. She didn't, she didn't go in as a more, she went in as a black person and almost won, right? And, um, when I'm done with this one, I'm gonna share with you how I almost won a custody case. And, um, the judge actually straight up said, you would have won if you were part of a temple. So we'll, I'll be, and I, I have another more who said the same. He had the same experience and we'll be going into that later. So that's lesson two, right? Make sure y'all come back next time. If you're on YouTube, be sure to like, share, subscribe, share with your friends. So we can start suing these folks. Um, get paid. It's, it's time, right? We're not, we're not our grandparents. Alright, no, we shall not overcome. We shall give you das boot. I'll sue your socks off and enjoy, enjoy the whole time, right? This stuff is not hard. It is not hard. It's being used by people who can't stay in the sun for more than fifteen minutes without burning. It's not hard, alright? Um, so next week, uh, we're going to the next part, causes of action, alright? Uh, those are fun. I might share something before then, like so y'all can look into it. Um, because you'd be surprised how many causes of action there are and how valuable it is if you know them. There's a, um, a four book, a four-volume collection of all the causes of action that you can use to sue somebody in, in the United States. I looked at this mug in twenty-ten, it was like, uh, eleven thousand dollars, right? I might have to go back and get it. Now, now I can, I actually had that option. I might have to go back and get it. I know it costs more, but it's, it's four books for eleven thousand dollars, because it tells you every single way to sue somebody in this country. I think it's worth it. So with that, um, see y'all next week or before then, because we wanna start talking about money. I don't know about y'all, like Sharia banking. Cause, uh, you know, the, the United States, this ship, this, this ship is sinking, right? And more as a navigator, so you know. It's about time, it might be time to start building that arc, right? And with that, I gotta go. Islam, thank you all, and I'll check y'all out later. Islam, peace and bye-bye, y'all. Alright, bye-bye.